Are we good, team?
Yep.
Call to order and like to stand for the Fledge of Allegiance. The Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to approve the minutes of our prior meeting, September 12th, 2023. I have a motion to approve the following.
So moved.
Second.
The September 12th monthly minutes. Can I have a... So moved on that one. And a second.
Second.
Sorry. We have a motion to accept the minutes on September 12th. Allo in favor?
Aye.
Reading your correspondence, letter received, open meeting room, violation closed. Financial conditions, operating budget to actual balances. Income for fiscal 24, nine hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. Expenses, one million, one hundred and thirteen dollars, thirty, three hundred and sixty-two cents. Ah, three hundred and sixty-two dollars. Receivables, outstanding water receivables, one hundred and twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and fourteen. Months commitments, thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty, and water receivables, ninety-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-three. I have a motion to accept the financial report as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Alright, allos in favor?
Aye.
Expenditure warrants, motion to approve expenditure warrants as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Allos in favor?
Aye.
Alright, superintendent's report.
We installed three new hydrants, Ministry, Tremont Street and Pine Street. We got three more, I think we could say it's four. Hopefully we can get those done before it gets too cold out. And saw the auto flushing on Main Street. And they had it working for one day, but the program wasn't programmed right.
Right.
So Stan Holden from Holden is gonna come back and reprogram it this week. And try to get that going again. We had a main break last night, ten, nine, two thousand, nine, ten ninety-eight, Tremont Street. Greg came in, fixed it. Asked Greg if he needs some help, and he said no. This he's on vacation. So we're gonna have to discuss, talk about that. That's in the business, whole layer. The, uh, that's the main break. We've had some dirty water complaints due to the main break. Got some Red Bee gone out today. And I'm looking to take a vacation in November first, around November first to eleven, eleventh or twelfth. So it'll be like six days.
Cool.
And I think that's it, mostly everything else is in the old business, under business.
So, uh... I don't have to make a motion to approve that, okay? No. Alright, old business, Somerset, why, alright, we're gonna skip that. Nothing new on that.
No.
Nothing new, alright, okay. MIU repair, same old, same old?
Same old.
Main Street Waterman Project, it's almost done?
Uh, yeah, we're on the third COVID now, they finally got the pressure test to pass, uh...
The big one, right?
Yeah.
The, the big cro- the big, the bridge?
Right, the bridge.
Awesome.
Yeah, well, what it was, it was a bad valve, pretty much what I told them at the beginning. They had a...
That's great, that's great, good job, yeah?
Yeah.
Hands up, that's awesome.
So, and then, um, we got the pressure tests, uh, pressure tests passed, we're waiting for chlorination. They did, I did, they did, sorry, they did a chlorination, de-clawed today, did some samples today. Culver two, they were waiting for the samples to come back from Culver two. Uh, probably be tomorrow, for sure.
Nope.
Everything else is done there, they paved it, but it's pretty choppy. They put some more pavement on Culver one, that's a little better.
Okay.
But they're all gonna be fixed.
Okay, sounds good.
And, uh, see what else we're getting there. I think that's it for that.
Alright, C-1A replace them well, check it with you guys?
No, he hasn't, not yet.
No?
Nothing new on that?
I heard from him.
I, I did hear from him, and he said that, I can't remember the other kid's name, Black? Keep Black?
Yeah.
Uh, he's working with the contractor, so...
Okay.
If I hear anything, I love to...
So, but they...
I'll tell him to call you guys tomorrow or something. I don't think he has anything new though, so... That's all he told me, so everyone, they're working.
Perfect.
Alright. Distribution labor vacancy, review, discuss, and act. So, obviously Gary put in for it?
Gary signed it, yeah, Gary wants to go down there.
Goodbye.
We're looking at, uh...
Right, everyone, obviously.
We're looking at, uh, the, uh, ten sixteen, for him to go down there. And we're gonna start to, uh, gonna exercise, uh, clean out the valves, exercise some of the valves they're gonna be using for two days, and then start flushing on eighteen. And the following week, ten twenty-seven, week of ten twenty-seven, they'll be flushing then. So it's eighteen to the twenty-seventh, so almost two weeks of flushing, hopefully we can get it completed by then.
Is that how you do your flushing?
Flushing hydrants, yeah, this is... It's gonna be ten, uh, ten sixteen, uh, ten eighteen to ten twenty-seven.
Thank you.
Alright, so we're gonna have to fight with, uh, what they thought vacancy here.
So let's go to who are the valve actu- valve actuators?
Valve actuators, I gave, uh, guys, commissioners. The date on it says May thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, but they haven't changed, it's the same price.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, nothing's changed on that. We're looking at the six, the six inch, uh, I'm looking to get either some of these done this year, some pond ones, and then I'm looking for three on three. So three, six inch, and three ten inch actuators. So that'd be three, three six inch here.
Yeah.
There's six total, there's three on each side, influent and effluent valves. And the ten inch is on the effluent side, but those are the corn ones. So I'm looking to get those done.
So three six inch and a ten, so forty grand?
Three and three.
Oh, sorry, sixty, oh, sixty.
Yeah.
Give or take, right?
Thirty grand, yeah.
A thirty and thirty, basically.
And then we'll talk, we can discuss the other ones, say it, right?
Yeah, I, I got this quote. You told us that those valves are, uh, so those actuators are obsolete.
The ones that...
They're basically keeping them together with, uh, a little bit...
That's it.
There's no pots for them.
How was that?
Start of the plant.
Nineteen years?
No.
Eighteen, nineteen?
Yeah.
No, they were new to this plant.
Twenty, almost twenty years.
Those actuators are obsolete.
And, uh, then when we take those out, we'll have some pots for the others.
Right. Stop getting...
Yeah.
It's kind of, I like that we do in green print, it's not like, okay.
Yeah.
Alright, well, maybe we should talk about this on the, for the November, to, to transfer some money over.
Yeah.
And on the free side, because we had already talked about that. We can, we can talk about that, or you can add it and then get it up here.
And that won't be done really until the spring anyway.
No, that'll be done this winter, right? Whenever they do, you can... Yeah, you can do that this winter. That's time to do that with this winter, because it'd be down...
Yeah, and it just says delivery estimated at twelve weeks.
Oh, I got this.
Oh, yeah, I told you.
It's one of the... If, if we're gonna appropriate funds, I can tell them to...
It could carry up to thirty weeks, that's what it, you know, so reading that, I was like that.
So maybe, yeah.
But that was during COVID too.
Oh, it was.
Oh, okay, alright, alright.
Like I said, the, the date side, so twenty, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
So that was during COVID, so I'm sure everything's a lot better than that.
Yeah.
But I can ask, I can ask him, you know.
Alright, great.
Alright.
Sounds good. Altitude valve?
Altitude valve?
I think, uh, the altitude valve, uh, and, um...
William Street? William Street?
William Street is, uh, needs some service, it's been out of service for a while, or...
Ever? Forever.
That would help us with, um, being able to Elm Street tank, because I think the top seven feet can't fill because of the location down...
The only thing I worry about on that top seven feet is, is your pressure down at Pleasant Street is higher than a hundred, a hundred change, and then downward off the other opposite, you're a hundred change.
So if you take more pots...
So I don't know what, ten more feet, obviously, with math, right?
Five pounds?
Yeah. It's just something to think about, right? I know, and I know you got all that dead space. I guess it creating...
And that might help us with THMs.
Do we need a vent up there? Something, yeah, I mean, a better venting system, I, I know, I know. Have we looked into a, a full flail, like full-fledged cleaning of that to get?
We haven't.
To see what the cost is?
I just got the report back, uh, the end of last week from, uh, We're Winning Current.
Oh. Oh, we have recommendations?
We're gonna discuss that.
Oh, okay, perfect, thanks. Alright, we'll move on. So you can look into, yeah, check it?
Look into it.
I know they fixed it once, probably talked to whoever, I remember them saying they fixed it once, so... I know, it's one of those things that if you don't use it, it's gonna seize up. If you're not like working it, obviously, because it's in... But I have a gate.
It's just, uh, I don't...
It's another little...
Been down, but, uh...
Forever.
We can take a look at.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Get, get it, uh, get it fixed.
Alright, so obviously disinfection by product appliance, review, so that's next.
So, uh, Zach gave me this, I think it was last week, gave me the final update on it. That's a lot to look at, but if, uh, the recommendations are on page nine, you wanna read those real quick?
Let's go right to that. Nice paper.
It is.
They're really, they're really smart on the paper. I gotta be honest.
I'm, I'm sure.
Alright.
Sure costs this way.
Yeah.
If I put it back in order, I know what I'm doing. So some of the recommendations, uh, with the storage elevated tank, they're talking, you know, pretty, uh, pretty much says that six to seven days during the summer, and forty days during the winter months, the water sits there. They're talking about doing some flow tests, taking Elm Street out of service, doing some flow tests. Taking the injection, chlorine injections out of service, also at both tanks. See what, see what that brings us, with the chlorine residual, uh, residual in the system. Hopefully that would help with the THMs. And if it still continues after that, they recommend implementing quarterly flushing, uh, target distribution areas to high water usage and monitor THM, see if they go downward after the flushing. So we're gonna be doing the flushing next couple of weeks, hopefully that'll help out. And see where that gets us, I was hoping that automatic flusher would work a little better, but... And then...
How do you take that tank, you mean take it offline for good?
Well, to see what, to see what it does for us.
Anything that works?
At the time.
Right.
And then if that all doesn't work, they recommend building a new storage tank at William Street, one million gallons, because they're saying, hey, you have too much storage. We should have about a million gallons of storage, and we've got over two and a half million gallons. That's why the water's sitting there, causing the THMs.
Wow, somebody wants to...
A million, so take the two million out?
Before I read this, I, before I read this, they said, well, the water, I said, maybe build a higher tank there, one million gallons.
So you'd need a...
Yeah, you're right.
You'd need like a big pig up top, because obviously...
Yeah, okay. My, my...
So, well, that's what they recommended, so then, uh, this is what I'm gonna send over with the violation, what they recommended, so, since we only just got it, and it's due the eighteenth, so tomorrow, we're gonna, right, send out some letters to the customers about the violation, and, uh, water health in town. The DUC sent up, sent my report to them. I'm gonna, I wanna give them the recommendations that we have here.
Now that THM, excuse me. Oh, see, look.
Yeah, so, uh, our violation was, if we had, we got, I think it was a hundred and four, and if we had a hundred and three, we wouldn't have had a violation, it came out eighty point five, and eighty's the threshold, so they rounded up to eighty-one. So we were in violation by just over, unfortunately.
But there's no immediate risk to the community?
No, no immediate risk.
Okay.
There's a letter we're gonna send out, explains everything, uh, you put the letter in your packet.
Yeah. Very general?
Nope, not that one.
I'll look at that one, okay.
This one?
That's the letter, it's, uh, that's gonna be sent out to all the customers in the district, explaining the violation. And no immediate danger, it's a long-term, over years effect. It's not an emergency, explains, uh, pretty much every water system in the areas had the same problems that we're having with THMs.
I'm gonna go back to the, to the million gallon storage tank, just for a second. That, I read the one, it's good stuff. The, I wonder if keeping the two million down and adding a one million down, so you can do like this, and then this, would help, because now you're just, you know, you can take all that, but you still have the pressure.
Yeah.
Kind of, kind of like having a, uh, you know, the million gallon tank is more like this, right? And then you've still kept your two million. And you, now you're just taking all that water out, bringing it back, you know? And just going like this instead of...
We need to fix the altitude valve first.
Right, right. You'd probably have to have some kind of actuator in there or something even, to keep, alright, we're shutting this down, hit the button, shut one side, and then drain the other one, keep, not shut it, but, you know? The altitude valve, yes.
You might, if you put it at the same location, you might need a booster pump for the elevated tank and the other tank. Would be just for the volume of the water, and maybe chlorination station there.
If you could just get rid of that water, you know? Like you said, a million gallons, that would...
Yeah, well, I think they're talking about keep, you go back and keep the Elm Street tank, and you'd have the one million gallon, and not have the two million, two million, two and a half.
I'll have to talk to them, because I'm not too keen on keeping a tank from nineteen forty-nine. Well, it's been plugged a few times.
Yeah.
Jeez.
Yeah, well, you have to look at the integrity of it.
I know.
Well, maybe you could put two tanks, but if, if they're gonna take it out of service, obviously you don't need the elevation over there, that tank.
Right, if they can prove that we don't need the up...
You could...
My only, my only fear would be, okay, now we gotta take, you gotta take this tank offline to clean and line, or clean and, you know, paint, or whatever it is on the inside?
What tank?
Because you don't have a tank, right?
Yeah, you don't have a tank.
Yeah.
Now you're running twenty-four seven, God, hope you don't, you know?
Yeah, right, something happens.
Right, well, you probably have no pressure anyway, what do you do, I know?
Let me stop, right. You have to talk to them about...
I'm gonna, I'll talk to them, and I'll, we'll read through this.
Yeah, we'd have to talk to them about that. So that's, that's the THMs and the violation we got, and like I said, mostly everybody got this violation. Swansea got it, has violation. Somerset...
Just recently?
Swansea had, they, they haven't had it recently, because they put aeration in, the excess, they got below it. Same thing with, uh, Dartmouth. Somerset just had this go out, a couple of weeks ago.
Do you, would you, would you ever consider chloramines? I know you, you, I know you have familiar...
Familiar area to it.
You could, you could do chloramines, but same thing, you gotta do a study on it.
I mean, that would help.
Yeah.
I know you guys did it in Dartmouth, I don't know where...
You have to do the study with the quality of water, water here, it, it wasn't that big, and we thought it was gonna be...
Like, didn't help that much?
No, it helps, it helps, you know?
We really don't need that much.
We have a bunch of options.
But if, if, I think maybe just the flushing maybe?
Right, 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 right.
And...
I'd be curious to see what happens after your flush, too.
An air, uh, aerator in a tank, the two tanks, that might help.
Maybe a different style, because those might not be working like they should be.
Well, they got a mixer in there, right?
The mixer.
They got mixes, aerators, so they'll...
We need something a little better, yeah.
Bubbles, and then come up and it'll take out some of the THMs.
That's what you guys did, right, in Swansea?
Swansea did it.
And that worked fantastic, no? That's been very successful?
And, uh, they got mixes and aerators in Dartmouth. And same thing with, uh, East Providence I came from, and they, they redid their whole system there, too. They did transmission line that they were buying the water, they made one, uh, line to the tank, and then they inject chlorine to the tank now instead of where it comes across the river. It's just the tension time with the chlorine and the old water, just forms the chloramines, uh, THMs and stuff.
It's crazy, it's crazy, because if you look at this system, at night when we shut down, that William Street will go down, it's home. Goes up. So it's absolutely monstrous, that tank, that water is going over to the elm and filling it. So it's just old water, oh, come on in, and then, and then it bad, you know, lose five days, six days.
Yeah, and this year with the THMs, uh, we're getting a lot of rain, and then, so we weren't using a lot of water.
Right.
So the water was sitting there even longer, I think.
Right.
And then, and then when we got hot days, the tank would heat up.
Sure.
And then...
And you get scared because you don't wanna, you wanna let it go down, but you're really guilty, we don't have that volume, so it's a tough balance, it's a hard balance.
And we need, and the altitude tank valve would help, because we could put more in the tank and lower it, lower it more, we could get more of a turnover each day by just adjusting the levels, the tank levels. And we can't do that with the altitude valve, you know?
Right.
That's why I tried to do the hydrant flusher, the automatic flusher, driving some water around the backside of that tank where we're getting the THM hits, but...
So they do, do they test it again?
Uh, next month, we'll be testing again, with the THMs.
Isn't there a precursor test we can do?
We can.
Yeah, I know.
I can do, I could detest it, I could test once a month, and just put, do not report. But that's for our own, we could do it for our own engineering purposes.
Aren't there a test that they, you can test for like, oh, like a precursor for THM, and you can... Like, it's not a THM, but it's like, oh, we're gonna have, this is not good, there's a precursor, there's like a...
Yeah, I can, I can test, we do, we did it in Dartmouth for engineering purposes, every month we test, and we put, don't report.
Alright.
And it's for our own purposes, so I could test next, next week, I could get the bottles, I could test this week. And just put, do not report, and see what we're looking at. If you wanna do that, we can do it.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, we'll do it, okay?
Alright, um, so that's that one. Lethincopper RFQ, obviously, I got back to you, the RFQ, so we just need to review, I mean, it's basically...
Yeah, just what date you want me to send it out and have it due, you said two weeks, so I think I put October twenty-fifth?
That's for the new Lethincopper rule, and it's basically, you get to pick whoever you want to help us with the...
Yeah.
Um, compliance of it.
Yeah, so that, that went out, it's gonna go out to bid, right?
Right, after he said to bring it to the meeting first, see if you agree with the dates, and then we'll send it out. The twenty-fifth, be due on the twenty-fifth, or if I send it out, it's...
Okay, Eric?
And then you can approve it the next week.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can do this part, I may, I don't know.
Do we have a vote now?
You can vote if you want.
Alright.
So bid out the RFQ for...
Uh, we, so, okay, Lethincopper rule RFQ, uh, we'd like to, uh, sort of vote to approve, uh, for the what date? Twenty...
To put out to bid?
To put out to bid for the twenty-eighth?
Twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth, we'll go with the twenty-fifth, put out to bid for the RFQ for Lethincopper on the twenty-fifth of October. Allos in favor? I mean...
So moved?
Well, I have a...
Second?
And a second, if, allos in favor?
Twenty-fifth?
Alright, great. The ayes have it. I hate to...
I just had one more thing on the superintendent's report, Nifty's permit, discharge permit, it's due November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, so, I've been starting to work on that.
Alright, okay, so you probably have to transfer that in your name?
Right.
Because he's leaving, and then whatever happens after that will figure it out. Just 'cause, I have, I know I have it in my name, but you, just 'cause he did it?
Yeah.
Just put it in yours and out?
Yeah, I went online and I looked up, uh, it's, got your number, you put it in, and it shows you the date you did it, and it gives you, kind of tells you how to go through the whole thing.
It can be a little pain in the neck, but once you, they'll walk you through it to, they're not, that's pretty cool, they're very good. Alright.
That was the last thing.
A November special meeting warrant, I've looked at it already, I don't know if you got that. Pretty good, it's pretty, pretty much... Beautiful.
It's an article, hmm, maybe in there?
I already looked at it, I don't know where it was. Tina, you put it in?
Yep, it's in there. Article seven, that's to pay off the, um, the bond, um...
The bond, yeah.
C-1.
What is the date for that meeting?
What is the date?
We don't know yet.
Oh.
We're gonna decide it right now.
Oh, you figured it out?
Well, so tax setting is the fifteenth of November, so we have to have it done before then, so when...
You told, I told you the dates I can't do.
Yep, we know, so it's between the years, too.
We only, we need two of us, so if you can't be here, don't, it's okay.
So this is when you can't, you can't be, well, basically, these two days, you can't do.
I'll be back the, the fourteenth, I think it is, right? The fourteenth, the Tuesday?
That's the date before the tax setting?
Yeah.
We gotta do it before, right?
Well, it's not Sunday, it's the...
You can get back to me tomorrow, that's okay.
I was just looking, no, those days are fine. You want any of those ones before, yeah?
Alright.
Whenever you... Thirteen, fourteen, whatever.
Ken?
Well...
Or you wanna do the week before, or...
Either, whatever, rather not to the fourth.
Oh, okay. So do the third one?
That'd be too quick if I turn around?
No, it's my question.
Well, I think, okay, well, let's just say that.
So you should keep crossing that off?
Of course, that one off.
Tina, we're letting you pick, basically.
You're letting me pick?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
We don't care, it's all on you.
If you, would you be here the thirteenth?
Um, on day night?
We're not offended if you're on big, it's fine, we can, we'll go where it, you're entitled vacation time.
I'm just saying, because if you're not, like, if it's like, no, don't, don't think I'll make it, you know, the weekend before, the week before.
Lenny, Lenny won't be offended, being seen as though he may be the only person there.
Last meeting.
No.
And the two checkers?
It looks like it'd be getting in like, ten, eleven, ten o'clock at night, on the thirteenth.
So why don't we do it the week before, the six, seven, three? Do you have the preference? I'll see what day I can get the...
Okay.
The people and, um...
Let us know, keep it updated.
We're gonna have a regular meeting too, right?
We'll have to have a...
Can we do our regular meeting before, and then just do both of them? Can we do our regular meeting before, and then just do both of them back to back?
I'm gonna make a motion.
To be as efficient as possible?
To, I would like to make a motion, November seems like it's very hectic here. And, you know, you're away from a bit in November, you're going on vacation, and I'm traveling two weeks, I don't know, three, two or three, whatever it is. We're having this special meeting, I'm gonna make a motion to skip November's monthly meeting.
You could do that, or we could just do a half hour meeting, be it where?
Ten seconds.
Just assign.
That's fine.
Water system.
We'll do our meeting before, like Eric said.
Let's do it.
Eighty, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Eric, I'll be there, he'll be there, no one, we'll be fine.
Oh, that's true, because you won't be there either.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I get your logic. Yeah, up to you guys.
There's no one around, that's okay.
If there's nobody, yeah.
Anything comes up, we'll come in and sign it.
Yeah, we'll come in and sign it.
Just, well, you need anything, call us, obviously. We didn't take time off this summer, I don't, I don't remember.
Right.
So let's, let's, November's tough, it's really hard.
That's fine, what maybe we could do is just, um.
Bring everything we sign.
We're gonna have to sign this, so maybe we'll do a quick meeting just to sign it at some point before that, and then.
And that's not a big deal, no one should get mad if we come in in the morning and sign that, it's a quick one, it's just signing the warrant. It's not a meeting.
Right, it's just an improvement.
We can do it at three thirty, you know, whatever, after work, just boom, done. If anyone wants to talk to us, we'll be there for ten minutes.
He's signing warrants all the time.
Is that good with you?
He's signing warrants all the time.
I said, is that good with you? Yeah, so I, I'll let you know tomorrow what day the meeting's gonna be, when I know when I can get the.
Yeah.
Um.
Thank you.
Middle school and.
And what's the purpose of the meeting? I know it's a special meeting, but you had a special meeting last month.
That was different, that was for the approval to, for Cita Will.
Yeah, we had to sign that by October third.
We were under it, we were under it.
And we didn't have the free cash, we got the free cash like two days after that meeting, but we had to have it.
So this November meeting is to resolve free cash?
Right, yeah, yeah, all the normal.
Transfers.
Transfers to, you know.
Okay. Now, there's no big ticket items?
Just paying.
It's just transfer, right?
Pretty much, paying Cita through one off.
Cita one?
Right.
Cita one with, with the funds we have.
Everything will be free cash, you'll have.
Okay.
Nothing, nothing out of the ordinary, but that really, and that was approved the last meeting. Nothing raised and appropriated.
Okay. Now, that meeting will be seven P M? Thank you.
All right. You guys have the, thank God. Simon Davis is gonna be the moderator, right? So we have a moderator.
I usually try to get Scott Dingus.
Okay.
He usually does it, I just, he could do the last one, so we have to.
Okay, all right, so that was planned, okay.
I like her, she's fine. She's like a mom.
She is.
She's really good. Oh, she's so fun.
All right, so I'm not gonna, we don't know when the district meeting is, so I'm gonna skip that. All right, next regular meeting commissioners, of commissioners is canceled. Uh, will be December. Uh, anyone have any idea?
The second Tuesday is the twel- twelve?
Eleven?
Twelve?
Second Tuesday, I'm sorry. Twelve, okay, so the next regular scheduled meeting of the commissioners will be December twelfth.
December twelfth.
At six P M. Lenny, remember.
Not six oh five.
And do we have any public input?
I get a few questions, sorry.
Sure you do.
T H, THM, what is that?
Tri-.
It's simple.
It's, in simple terms?
Yes.
Um, so I want, I would like to first reiterate, we are like.
Oh, no, 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 I know, I know.
It's not like we jumped into this crazy range.
Right.
Um, it's a tri, tri- hell, not H, right, THM. And it's a precursor, it's like a.
It's carcinogen.
Carcinogen.
Oh, we don't need it, we don't need, no.
It's form.
There's no immediate danger.
We are, we're like, if it's eighty, we're like eighty-one right now, right?
Okay.
We're, and not even, it was like, because you're in a percentage point, we jumped up to eighty-one. It's right there.
It's a rounding up.
And in the summer, we usually are higher.
Can I have it?
Going out tomorrow.
It's, um, we would obviously see some, something we need to address.
Just keep it to yourself till it all goes out to everybody. It's going out tomorrow or Thursday, it's gonna be mailed tomorrow.
Right.
But that's, you can read it.
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm just gonna say a letter's going out.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's going to be, you know.
That's fine.
There's no immediate danger to the public, I'm not gonna go and read.
Say right now.
They can read.
It's almost like, it's something we, we talked about, we're, we're gonna address it.
Sure, now, you're in the process of developing a remediation plan, or do you already have?
DEP is working on that with.
Okay.
We've gotten recommendations from our engineers.
Yes.
Being developed.
Yes. It's in the works.
Right.
Ching.
It's something all the water departments and districts are dealing with.
And it's generally worse in the summer. So your winter numbers are better, and then, it's an average, so it's a running average. So you can be over for, for a quarter, which generally, there are times here where we are. Right, and then your other quarters, if they're lower, and then that running average meets, and it's eighty and, what, below eighty and sixty, whatever it is. And you're fine. If it's below eighty on the THMs, you're equally, so you got one hundred, you got a hundred one month on a quarter, and you got a seventy, and you got a fifty and a ninety. It all equals, say, seventy-two, you're good.
Right, now.
It's a running average.
From what I heard in the discussion, the more, why do you use, the lower the number?
Well, it's, it's got, it's got to do with chlorine and the detention, uh, chlorine and the con, and how long the chlorine reacts with the, as the water gets older in the system or in the tanks, and it acts with the organics.
Right.
Water, and it forms these THMs.
So the longer it's in the tank, the more likely it'd be THM?
It could be, yes.
So could one make the argument that all this rain that we had reduced demand?
People water less.
It made, it made it so that we're not using the tanks, the, the water is less often. So the water's sitting there, because of all the water, the rain we've had is, is part of it. The more it moves, most, most of the time, the TH forms on dead ends.
I'd like to say that we should have probably flushed this spring.
Because it's stagnant, it's stagnant, right.
It didn't flush in the spring.
Hmm, yeah. So it's, so it's stagnant, the water sits there stagnant, so it has a better chance to form the THMs. So that's what they're saying in the report. In the sun, in the winter, the water sits there for forty, forty, forty days. In the summer, it moves more, but this year, the water's not moving as fast, because of all the rain.
Let it go on one day, everyone just.
Let it go.
Let it go.
Everyone on the way.
Oh, heat too, right?
We all try.
Heat also increases it. Right, so heat in the tank, so summertime.
That's what I'm saying, that because the water's sitting there, and then it's raining, and then all of a sudden, it stops raining, and you had all this water, so you're not watering your lawns. The water sits in the tank, you know.
Higher it gets the more.
Ninety degrees up, ninety degrees, and it sits there all night, ninety degrees temperature, and the next day, okay, it rained again. So it sits there again, right, so it's, you gotta, you gotta, you know, we're trying, we're trying to do the best with moving the water and trying to, that's, and the recommendations, what the engineer says.
Thank you. Now, is it safe to say that there'll be some groundwater as a result of the flushing?
Yes.
Because you're not gonna put up signs like Somerset, right?
We're gonna put signs up.
Oh, are you?